Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, December 4, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I would like to make note that we need to table item 8D, and that is under Planning and Zoning Services, which is a public hearing, a resolution requesting approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 12, Section 12.04.00. This item will not be heard today. It will be re-advertised for another future meeting. And if you are here for this item, please just continue to watch the county website, and this will be posted when that item is going to be reheard. With that change being made to the agenda, I'd ask for an acceptance.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Stamen, a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We're going to move past the proclamation and come back to that in just a few minutes because we're waiting on someone to arrive here that, believe it or not, Henry County has a traffic crisis, for the most part, during rush hour, and they're tied up in traffic. And so, we will come back to that item in just a few minutes. The first item is under County Manager. We have a resolution authorizing the official acceptance of a GDOT contract for a thousand feet runway extension and 25 feet widening project at Atlanta Regional -- Atlanta South Regional Airport, and that's going to be exhibit number 12 in your book. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. The item number 13, as you mentioned, the grant, what I'm going to try to do is cover 13, 14, and 15 to one time because they're interwoven. The grant being the most important part of, if not the county's going to move forward with runway extension by accepting the bid, which is in number 14, and then the Croy bid to actually do the construction engineering work. So, they're all interwoven together. So, I'm going to quickly go through a presentation here so that the board -- I know that board members may be having to leave. So, I'll try to get through this, but I do want to -- I will answer questions. Before I do, I want to make a quick introduction. In the audience today, we have people that have been working on this for the past year. Abports, Chuck Kurtz is here from Abports, LPA, Mike Ryder, Croy, Rebecca Collins, Michael Joseph, and Mr. Croy. And from GDOT, we have with us today Carol Comer, who is the Director of Intermodal, which Aviation falls under, and Katie Elam, who recently, within the last couple of months, replaced Carla, who's not here. We were working with Carla for -- up until that time. So, we've had tremendous support in the others, FAA. We had Scott Sarit working on this project for the past year. So, as you can see, numerous people and entities, if you would, that have put a lot of time and effort. I also want to thank Mike Bush and Latonya Wiley, County Attorney and Director of Finance. Tremendous number of hours that everybody's put in to get us to this point. Moving on, first, this project is a two-phase project, and I will cover it through this presentation quickly, what it is and why. Phase one of this project, as you can see at the top, is to construct a thousand-foot runway and a taxiway extension with 490 feet of displaced threshold, and widening the runway at the same time from 75 to 100 feet. The various items that are within the dollars of the bid, which the total amount of the grant that we'll be seeking is $3,044,000, with the county's portion $163,000. Quickly, how that is put together. In -- the board approved, back in June or July, $217,000 for Croy to design and put the bids together, which we've gone out for bid and bids are back. Item number 14 is the acceptance of the bid if the board so chooses, which is number two, which is the lowest bid of $2,603,529. And then, to do construction, Croy's cost to do the construction, which is in the grant as well, of $223,420. So, the total of the previous page of the grant is in total of $3,044,000 to cover what we've already paid out. The board had authorized for Croy to do the design and bid to be able to get the bid number two, and again, to complete the project. The breakdown of the monies of the 304.4, FAA is providing $2,740,000, GDOT $541,000, and Henry County is $163,000. If we're at 5% and GDOT's at 5%, the question can be asked, why isn't GDOT and Henry County contribution the same? We're higher. The reason for it is the fact that of the -- if you took 5% of the 304.4, that would be $152,000. So, we're paying $10,873 more. And the reason for that is the Croy design is not eligible for GDOT 5% reimbursement because if you do the work before you get the grant, which is what now we're going to do, get before we do anything else if the project's approved, that's the $10,000. So, when I presented it and the board approved it back in June or July, it was with the understanding we would get 90% reimbursement, would not be able to get the 5. But obviously, if you don't do the work, you can't proceed to get the design work done and the bids out. Phase one, basically, is this section right here in black, which is the extension of the runway by 1,000 feet with another 25 feet in width to the existing runway, which goes beyond this way for 4,500 feet. And the taxiway, which ends here, would be completed to bring it all the way around. So, our property line is here and here. So, everything here is inside of it. This is Mount Pleasant Road. Paragraph 16 of the contract with GDOT is where there is a condition that to the -- and I'll just read it. "It is understood by the sponsor," which is Henry County, "this contract constitutes phase one of a two-phase project. In order to obtain full utility of the pavement," and by that, what they mean is that within this 1,000 feet, part of this is threshold, displaced threshold, legal terminology, which cannot be used for landing, but can be used for takeoff. To get full utilization, meaning now being able to use it for landing as well, "the ultimate project requires construction of a phase two. Phase two consists of the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road and the Atlanta acquisition and the Runway Protection Zone, or RPZ. The completion of phase two is contingent upon the availability of FAA GDOT funding." In other words, if FAA and GDOT does not fund the 95%, Henry County is not obligated to proceed. Secondly, or continuing on, rather, "is further understood by and between these parties that once federal and state funding availability has been confirmed, the sponsor will proceed in all haste and expedite in completion of phase two of this project," which is noted above as Mount Pleasant and the RPZ land of this project, "that if phase two of this project is not initiated within five years from the date of execution of this contract, all state and federal funds for phase one, which is the $3,044,000, $3,044,000 of this project shall be returned to the department and the federal funds shall be returned to Federal Aviation." So, basically, what this is saying is that the county accepts the grant money for $3,044,000, and we pay our $163,000, as was noted, but within five years, do not initiate this other part of the project, other phase two, we would be obligate -- the county would be obligated to return that money. Phase two, trying to put something with it, is our engineers worked up details to explain this, but the phase two, basically, is, as it's said in the contract, "obtain full utilization of the pavement surface constructed in phase one of this project." To do that, requires relocating the road, including right-of-way, the RPZ purchase of 25.26 acres of land, remove displaced threshold, and runway safety improvements and engineering services. The total cost, as estimated, but that is contingent, as it says down here, upon negotiated price of land negotiations, and I'll cover that in a minute, is $3,354,000. The federal 90 and the state 5 and the US 5, as you can see, were equal there, is $167 additional dollars to complete the total project with the previous $163,000, which is $330,000. To lay this out a little bit more detail, the road construction, which is mentioned -- maybe I can do this. This is what phase two is all about. This is Mount Pleasant Road here, right now. Displacing that and instead putting a road through here will require purchase of land from the Atlanta Motor Speedway. And this land here is the RPZ land that is 25.26 acres that would have to be purchased. And the $3,354 -- $3,354 total price, 6 acres, 6.6 acres are required for road construction at $35,000 in the estimate. Land is $233,800, and the total cost of the road would be $1,009,000. I've checked with Terry McMichael of RGDOT, and he's consulted also with Rocky and Sploost. And basically, a mile worth of road costs the county anywhere from a mile and a half to $2 -- $1,500,000 to $2,000,000 with right-of-way. Again, this right-of-way may or may not be in the same context. Terry has looked at the means by which this road and the materials and so on, and he's not here, he's out sick, and so I can't speak. But Rebecca Collins did have conversation -- Rebecca with Croy did speak with him. But this $1,009,000 is close to what Henry County's been paying for a mile worth of road. This mile -- this road is about 4,800 feet, and that 4,800 feet, with the road being 5280 feet of length, it's just a little less than a mile's worth of road. Again, this would be the mile here we're talking about, and again, about 6.6 acres at 60 feet and the length, as I mentioned. The RPZ land of 2526, again, at the $35,000 is 884,000. And then, there are these other costs that were mentioned as part of phase two, which are those items here in addition to the land. That basically says for the cost of the project to do this as required per paragraph 16 is a $3,000,000 cost. And that $3,000,000 cost, as I said, is broken down by federal share and state share and Henry County share being 167.7. Now, the issue here is, and I spoke with Ed Clark of Motor Speedway on Friday after we got this language finalized, and I spoke with Ed Clark and mentioned to him, and I sent him a copy of this map for him to look at. He was out of town. And I spoke with him again yesterday. And again, I told Ed that I'd be presenting this. This is not a negotiated figure because we've -- I've never talked to him. I didn't have board approval to start negotiations, but had to have an estimate to present to the board to give you something at least to start from. What I didn't -- I forgot to mention earlier is the $35,000, Croy took the land value per our tax digest at $25,000 an acre and added $10,000 to it. There's no rhyme or reason, it's just they added 10 grand to get it above what it's presently on the tax digest for. That is to give us a number, which I just mentioned, is 3.354 million dollars. What I've doing -- what I've done here in this next slide is to show you that if the 31.94 acres, to make a $3,354 project, of which land is $1,117,000 at $35,000 an acre, I said, "What if the land cost goes all the way to $100,000?" And again, I have no figure for what it will or won't be till we sit down. The Speedway, all along, and are keeping them posted, has said what they would probably want to do is get land and trade, which means we'd have to find somebody near the airport that has land and get them to sell us the land or trade the land and buy the land, however it may go. So, it's a matter of what that other land will cost. But to put this in perspective, I said, "What if the land cost $100,000?" That would make the land $3,194,000, already in the $3 million is $1 million, which means the additional cost at 100 would be $2,760,000. Henry County's portion is 5%, which means that's $103,805 additional for the $2 million additional cost if we had to go to 100 an acre for that number of acres. When you add that to what I showed you originally of 167, which was estimated for the $3 million estimate that was initially done, the total cost of phase two, instead of being 167, would be 271,000. If you talk -- take the cost of phase one, because it's an interlocked project, you can't do one without the other, the assurance for the contract of doing it, that's $163,000, which gets you at 434,000. I'm not telling you that that is the final figure. I'm trying to give you some ballparks to show you what if it did increase by $2 million and what the county's cost of that would be versus GDOT and FAA. Again, I do have GDOT here, to the extent there are questions regarding these numbers or percents or whatever else to get further clarification. I'm going through this quickly, just to get this started, if you would, for discussion, if that be the case. What I put together here is something that, starting from the previous schedule, if the county costs to do phase one and two at 35 an acre or at 100,000 an acre, using the 31.94 acres of 330,000 or 434, which is that extra $103,000. If you take the design, the 217, which I mentioned earlier, the board approved back in June or July. As noted down here, this is money the county advanced to do the design and bid work. If the runway is not completed, the cost of this work, all $217,000, is the responsibility of the county. The approval to move forward was with the understanding, when the project was completed, the county would get 90%, not 95, but 90. Only from completion of the runway project is this eligible for 90% grant reimbursement. The county, basically, if we do nothing at this point, would take the 217 we've already spent, and it would be the county's responsibility. There would be no money coming back. If you take the cost of the project as estimated, again, estimated at 35 or at 100,000 an acre, being these two figures, and say, "This is what you're going to have in the project whether you do it or not," the additional cost of the project above the design work is $113,000 at 35 or $217,000 above the 217 at 100,000 for 31 acres. For that cost, what I noted down here, which you end up with for the additional monies or the monies already invested, you end up with a 5,500-foot runway versus 4,500. There is no displaced threshold. Takeoff and landing eligibility is all 5,500 feet. The 100-foot width is now, instead of the 75. Taxiway has been extended. You have a new one mile of new roadway, and you have 25.26 acres for additional land for the RPZ. I have also today Rick Alpert and Lynn Goff, who are members of -- owners of Promaker Development, and they're here for questions that maybe you want to ask. But they've been taking a look at and put this report together. I just want to highlight some things here, but one of the things they're trying to put together at the Speedway, and it's contingent upon, and they can answer this as well, but it's contingent upon the runway being extended for somebody to want to come here. And what they're talking about here is to bring a race car team and -- or teams, additional cars and so on, over the next five years. This is their report. I'll just go to the second page of this part for the report. And again, they're here today and said I could use this. But basically, what this says, "Our proposal, race team and facility would greatly benefit the current job market as well as barrage -- as a barrage of different industry groups. The category of job creation will occur direct, indirect, and induced. We anticipate creating approximately 90 direct jobs for Car 1 and Car 2 in years 2013 and 2014 with an average annual salary of $140,000 per employee. We forecast additionally -- or forecast adding an estimated 30 additional jobs in 2017 season." And there's more down there that disguise the indirect impact for the particular project as well as the induced impact that goes with having this project. And it's, again, they're here if you wish to ask some questions. They anticipated with the figure that was given to me, and over five years, that single project may be a potential investment of $40 million. Whether it's that project or other projects in the land surrounding the airport or anywhere that this airport can have a favorable impact of bringing investment to Henry County. For every $40 million investment of -- in Henry County, the 40%, as we know, brings it down to the taxable base of $16 million. You pay per thousand, so I just went ahead, and that's $16,000,000s. The millage rate currently is 14.5. That would be an additional annual property tax of $232,000. If, in fact, we were to return to the rate of millage prior to this year's increase of 11.75, it'd still be $188,000 additional annual property tax from that single investment. And again, it could be any $40 million investment. This is just one that was on -- is on the horizon, as was given to me by the members of Promaker. So, as you can see with that and comparing it, if you would, to the previous slide, where the total cost of the project is 232,000 to 434, and it may be higher. I'm not sitting here to tell you that the 100,000, there -- I think all the parts and pieces, the cost of the road and work that I could do up to this point to try to validate some numbers. And again, adding an additional $2 million, as I showed earlier, for additional cost for it. The only other issue is that the possibility exists, in talking with Ed, and that is, as you look at the map, are we going to be able to get away with only purchasing 25.26 acres? Because we do have a piece of property here that may or may not be deemed usable, and what would happen back here? So, those are issues that are outstanding that I can't answer today because I haven't felt I could sit and negotiate and try to get firm numbers. Best I could do is try to come up with, as I said, what if we had to purchase it at this price or that price? Adding another million dollars adds $50,000 more. For every million dollars additional cost, add $50,000 more to these figures. But again, if we are able to achieve a $40 million, a single $40 million investment, not only for the tax dollars, tax base, but also for the jobs that are mentioned earlier, we would have these kind of dollars, additional dollars, coming into the county through our property taxes. And I think I said that in one breath. You asked me to--
I'm not sure you took a breath, Fred.
You asked me to get through it quickly, so I just did, so--
Thank you, that was--
Any questions at this time? And again, I do have, as I said, LPA, GDOT, Abport, and Croy, who did I miss? And Promaker here. So, if you want to validate anything I've just said or question any of them, I've already warned them that they may have to come up here and speak, and they're all ready to.
I believe Mr. Preston has some questions.
Well, I appreciate everybody, first of all, moving everything up for me. I'm the one that has to jump out. If you notice, the newly-elected Commissioners are not here in the audience because they're on their way right now, probably to Athens, Georgia, where there's the new Commissioner training, and I'll soon be joining them. But I asked the Madam Chair to move this up because I felt like it was important that I be here to discuss this. The airport is a big part of District 2, and it's something without controversy. I'll just tell you that. It came up a good bit during the campaign. I've really -- I've spent a lot of time researching, studying, and I'm not going to lie, there's been a lot of lost sleep from it. You know, this is not an easy decision. I did want to talk about just some of the things I found when I, as I've been doing my research, and I apologize that I'm, you know, I'm giving this narrative, but I feel like it's important. When I've started doing research, I found out that after they had the plane accident, that it took one of NASCAR team out with a very prominent driver. The FAA has changed provisions where if your runway is below 5,000 feet, the 121 provision kicks in, meaning that the insurance companies and others don't cover your plane if something should happen. So, we are 500 feet short of really being, you know, acceptable to the insurance carriers. And as a result of that, NASCAR, a lot of the NASCAR teams that used to buy fuel and land their planes for the races have quit coming. They're flying into other airports, and that's decreased our fuel sales. We were at a point where we were selling close to 500,000 gallons. I think we're down to a little over 200,000 at this point. And with us getting a dollar a gallon, you can see that has a dramatic impact. So, what I've been telling people on the campaign trail, because I was just recently re-elected, it was a no-brainer for us to get the 1,000 feet. Because if we could get the 1,000 feet within our current fence line, why wouldn't we do that? Because it puts us over the 121 provision, and that's the idea. We could put -- we've got $2.7 million invested in this airport. Why not go ahead and put another 150,000 to 160,000 to go ahead and lock ourselves in? Well, that is not my dream of that occurring doesn't appear to be possible because, you know, FAA and GDOT would like us to proceed with phase two. And I guess I can understand that. It's just it really takes away some of our wiggle room because we are in uncertain economic times right now. Money is not easy for us. There's some really tough decisions that will have to be made in this budget cycle that scares me to death. But I guess where I'm at is that I'm okay with the airport expansion, if it's a $300,000 investment to receive close to $6 million or $6 million from the federal and state government if it turns out to be an economic engine. The big part of the research I've done also, and I understand that these are just what could happen, and nobody -- there's no guarantees on the race teams and everything else. But if you want to know, when I talk to people, what the biggest concern from citizens was is how do I get my property values back? I mean, because we've lost 40, 50% of our land. And, you know, we're not going to be able to tax our way out of economic problems. The only way we're going to be able to fix economic problems is if we start bringing jobs to Henry County, so that there's more people wanting to live in Henry County because they work in Henry County. And that will, that demand will increase property values. That's kind of, if you want to know, what my big hat-trick on how we're going to fix the economy is we've got to get more jobs here. And so, when I see that we could potentially add 90 to 100 jobs that are all six figures plus, you know, with an average of over $100,000, I look at my neighborhood, I look at other neighborhoods, and I go, "This could be a good thing." So, I guess I say all this to tell you because I want it to be very transparent. I don't, you know, I guess I could have done the easy thing and just not even come to this meeting since, you know, like I said, everybody is headed to Athens and probably been no worse for the wear. But I felt like it wasn't transparent. And, you know, you hear so many discussions about the government now, "We've got to be transparent." So, I wanted to be here to let everybody know kind of where I stood so I could take the accolades in the future or take the brunt of what's going on. So, I say all this to tell you, I'm for the expansion, but I do have two big concerns that I want to address, that I would like clarification. And without this clarification, even though I support expanding the airport, I don't feel that I can vote for it today or make a motion without these two points of clarification. One of the biggest parts of negotiating for purchases is whoever makes the first offer usually loses. And if we go ahead and move forward with this, there's no doubt which land we're buying. And the racetrack, I mean, Atlanta Motor Speedway, they've been big, you know, we've worked well with them over the years. They're great. I'm so thankful that we have them in our tax digest. But as soon as we pull the trigger on this deal today, all ability to negotiate on those purchase prices is limited to a large degree. They essentially have us over a barrel, and they control what price will be had. And that bothers me a little bit. The other thing is that these are not easy economic times. There's no guarantee that -- I know we have five years to initiate phase two. Phase one is a no-brainer, but phase two, you know, is not as easy of a decision. They give us five years to initiate is the word, but there's no clarification on what initiate is. If we had another 2008 economic event where essentially the wheels fall off the financial, you know, engine of the economy, is the FAA and GDOT going to hold our feet to the fire even though we're going to be doing everything in our power to keep things going? Does initiate mean that if we got the survey done, you know, or we started moving to the process, but because of economic downturns, we couldn't make it happen within their timeframe? Are they still going to ask for that 3.8? These type, these two points are what I wouldn't mind having a little bit of clarification on, just because this is a big step for us, and we appreciate all the work, you know, and the flexibility that's been provided to us. But there are some realities that give me pause from being able to vote today on this. And I'll be quiet because I know some others want to give some thoughts, and you--
What I'd like to do is ask Carol Comer, if she wouldn't please respond to your questions because they're GDOT FAA questions.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commissioners, pleasure to be here this morning. Commissioner Preston, to address your two concerns, the purchase of the property with the Speedway and the perception that you lose the ability to negotiate, there is a formal process that is documented by the federal government when we use federal funds to purchase property. And so, starting out of the box, the county will be required to go-- go and have the property appraised, then have the property, that first appraisal, a review appraisal done of that. That review appraisal will then set the fair market value of the property. And by law, you will be required to offer the property owner the fair market value. At that point, they can accept, or they can reject, and then the negotiations would begin. But certainly, we have spoken to the property owner in the past, and they're fully aware of the process and how it works. So there is the opportunity for negotiation. And at a certain point, since we're investing federal dollars into this project, there becomes a limit on how much above the fair market value that would be considered eligible. And then it would be, you know, a process just to move through that.
So playing devil's advocate, if we moved forward with this, and then the appraisal came in, and the negotiations started, and you guys have your cap of what the land's worth, but we are dealing with a billionaire. I mean, and billionaires, you know, and, you know, and I don't know, just a refresher of history, when he, when Broden felt slighted by the state of Georgia, he took a race from us. So I don't want to, you have to be careful with how you dance with people who have resources to that level. If they, if they came to a price, and we couldn't come to an agreement, do we have to pay back, you know, the 3.8 million on the expansion, when it's not our fault that we can't come to a reasonable fair market value price?
I think that what we would do, and that will go to answer the second concern that you had, was that we didn't have a definition of what initiate the project meant. And I think, I know, our definition of initiate would be that you are moving through that process, and that you are demonstrating a good faith effort, effort to facilitate the completion of Phase Two. I mean, certainly, insurmountable things may happen from time to time, and we would, we would evaluate that as we go through the process. But certainly, I feel, based on the 12 years that I've been working on this project, and the numerous conversations that we've had with the Atlanta Motor Speedway, they have been very amenable to understanding the need for the property for use for the runway protection zone, and appear historically to, to be a willing partner in, in helping facilitate the project.
Okay.
Any other board member have a question or comment?
If I might, I've asked Lynn Gaugh, if he might be able to comment on that last issue as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. In regard to Brian's question regarding the Atlanta Motor Speedway, and we'll give you a quick background. For 19 years, I've been heavily involved in Henry County with the Speedway, working with them on their marketing and their development in that area. We know that they are a cooperative partner. But through that 19 years, really become exposed to a great opportunity in West Henry County, that the airport and the racetrack can be great economic engines for Henry County. In that regard, in December of 2011, we announced the formation of the Bear Creek Alliance. Within that alliance, we have five property owners, along with Henry County, along with Atlanta Motor Speedway, to develop, privately develop up to 4,000 acres. That would really become an economic engine, including the racetrack, including the airport, including the Opportunity Zone, and hopefully a community improvement district. One of the negotiations that my partner Rick and I have had with Ed Clark is the ability to land swap the acreage that will be taken up by the threshold with the Lastra family, who owns roughly 3,000 acres. So there is offline dialogue for the property swap, which would be appropriate to protect Henry County, in that the Lastras have already offered the price for their property, for the asset that the Speedway wants to relocate their RV parking. So we somewhat put that provision in place, so that this develop, could occur, development could occur.
And forgive me, but I'm not in, probably the county attorney could be involved, you know, to make sure that I'm not saying anything inappropriate. But if there's a land swap that's going on, because there's definitely an economic benefit to the landowners that surround this airport. As soon as this expansion occurs, there's a lot more viability based upon the runway length. So is there a chance that this land swap would save the taxpayers of Henry County some money, where we don't have to, because of the economic benefit of the expansion, that we get a pass from the land acquisition?
Frankly, I see it will be a money maker for Henry County.
Exactly. But do you see what I'm saying? Because it would definitely help our, and I don't even know if that's legal, but I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we come to a consensus of how this, without a doubt, I think it's a good opportunity for Henry County, but there's some question marks. And if we could find an ability to, to help, because money's not laying around. I mean, we are going to have to have tremendous decisions made in the April, May, and June period, as we're setting up this, this coming budget. And I'm, if I thought I lost sleep over this, God help us with what's coming up, because I just, I've seen some numbers, and I'm concerned. So is there anything that the landowners and others around there are doing to help make this, just a, it makes it much easier for us commissioners to proceed with this, because we wouldn't have to use as much taxpayer funds?
Well, I'll, I'll explore that a little bit with you. First of all, with regards to the land swap, again, Ms. Wiley will have to address this, and how we do this, where one buys the property, and then you do a title transfer, whatever the case may be. But the land that's being proposed by the Speedway to swap with the threshold is worth about half the price that you would have to pay. So the swap's gonna be pretty significant. So there's a value there. But I want to go back to the comment that I made about the December 11 Bear Creek Alliance. What we've been working on in the past 12 months is to bring economic development. Yes, we acknowledge that those private landholders will benefit, but so will Henry County through tax increments, property taxes, the different things that will occur around the airport. Specifically, Bear Creek investors have put over $20,000 cash in anticipation of extending the runway. We're also bringing a NASCAR Sprint Cup team to Hampton to cooperate, I mean, to take advantage of Opportunity Zone and the community and the CID. But it's contingent on the runway. Again, we're looking at some of the actions and reactions that'll occur. So it's hard to really quantify it, as you mentioned earlier. But we do know what the impact of a NASCAR Sprint Cup team can bring to the community. We know what the impact of a air ambulance service, which Rick has been negotiating to bring up, the 30 helicopters to this marketplace. We've discussed that with some of the members of the commission. We know that there are opportunities there, but again, it's where the risk is placed, and where the commissioners feel comfortable in extending their commitment over a Phase Two extension, which seems to be the real concern, question, issue. So what we can offer to you is we have a list of prospects who are waiting to see what you folks decide on today, and then we begin to pull the triggers, and we can sit down and talk to Ms. Wiley. And again, Ed's really anxious to know as well, simply because it affects what he does with his traffic patterns and his facility.
Fred, I did have, and thank you so much. I appreciate you addressing. Fred, I did have one more question, and then I'm gonna have to quit talking, just because I'm running out of time, is the Mount Pleasant relocation.
Yes, sir.
Talk to me about what we're gonna do to make sure that those citizens, because it looks like we're gonna have to cut a whole new road, and that's their, I mean, is there consideration of what we can do to, to make that transition as easy as possible if we move forward with Phase Two?
The discussion I've had with everybody on this is the present Mount Pleasant, you come down here, and Mount Pleasant, you come down, down this road. This is Mount Pleasant. This is Speedway Boulevard. As you can see, it's still, it comes around here, and still ends up at Speedway Boulevard. So the residents that are in this area, who now would come through this little jag here, would have to go down here and come out here. If they're going to 1941, they basically, instead of coming here to here, it's a little bit longer, and they'll end up at 1941 over here. If they were going the opposite direction, then they would have a little bit extra travel distance to go from here to go around to come back. So they still have the access. This will be a paved road, obviously, six foot wide and so on, so that there is no loss. The plan is, plan would be, that this road would remain open. The beauty of this construction is, typically in construction, where you're doing it, you're having to have people out on the roads for safety purposes. From here to here, from here to here, rather, up to this point, that's all new road. So there won't be anybody out there, trucks, cars, whatever else, obviously, using this until it's completed. So once this is completed, then the shutdown. There would probably be some, some period of time here that we have a shutdown like we would with any construction, because of the building this part here to make this connection. And once that's completed, then this would be shut down.
You had a question?
I do. The deadline for this, according to what I'm reading, is the, by the end of 2012. Is that correct?
The, as far as the acceptance of all this, when we started this process over a year ago, and we started putting our timelines together, the thing we were working towards, if we could not start the construction by February 1st of 2013, we would not be completed with the construction by August 1st of 2013, which is in advance of the next race. So anything after February 1st, and leaving ourselves, just because I say six months and August 1st, I was leaving some slop time in there, if you would, just in case rain or whatever happened during the six months. We still had a week or two or three, so we'd still make the September race. And then we backed it up from there to, when does it have to be to GDOT for approval for a grant? And then backed it up from there for the bid time, the design time, da-da-da-da-da, and everything else. The timeline came, all this time, and this is even back in July, that the anticipation was that we needed to have the grant, or the bid out awarded by the 1st of December to get it to GDOT, because at the time, they were talking in terms of 45 days to go and get the grant approval. GDOT and FAA, in the last month or two, has really accelerated and worked diligently to make the grant available today, at the same time as the approval, if there, if you approve of the project today. So we've saved some time, so that we either can start earlier, or we still have the February 1st start time. There still is a letter to proceed that would have to be put together, which I believe could be up to two weeks still to get done, before anybody can start the project. So again, we can't start anything, or the grant is nullified. So again, it comes down to getting that letter of proceed. So again, what I'm trying to say is, when we went through and started this project, everything we backed up, from a schedule standpoint, said 1st of December, gotta have the bids in, actually into November, get them prepared, get them to the board, get approval, get it to GDOT, get approval of FAA and GDOT for the grants, so that by February 1st, we're ready to go. So we've done all that. We've been blessed, at this point, to have FAA and GDOT come back and say, we'll settle at our process. And quite frankly, what's happened is, this originally was gonna be GDOT's money, if I get this wrong, Carol, please correct me, but it was originally gonna be GDOT's money that they get from FAA, of their pool of money. And what has happened is FAA has instead said, we'll use discretionary, is that what it is? Discretionary, something like that? Some funds-
We've worked it out.
They've worked it out anyway, so that there are now funds FAA is advancing as well, to move this project forward. So it's, it's an assist to get us, the project done, but at the same time, an assist for the state of Georgia as well, with the other airports that are vying for grant money as well.
And, and this is just a comment on, on my part. I obviously support the, the purchase of the airport and the development of the airport. Otherwise, I wouldn't have voted for it, how many times we voted for it. But I think we have to realize also the fact, as Commissioner Preston indicated earlier, the airport was very much a hot topic during this previous election. And some of us won't be back. So the point is, we need to respect the fact that they, those opinions were expressed during the election. And based on communication with the county attorney, in, recently, there are unknowns. As far as will GDOT and FAA fund this in the future, we don't, nobody knows. I'm sure Carol doesn't know.
Well, again, paragraph 16, it says that they do not, they're not obligated.
The chances of them funding it will be greater than not funding it, because of what they've already invested into the project. So, I mean, you know, nobody knows what tomorrow holds. Understand that. When I asked the question about, is today the drop dead date? Mr. Preston says he's got to go to Athens. The other newly elected commissioners are there already. We think we know what their feelings are toward the airport. But I am not gonna sit here and backdoor a new board of commissioners coming on myself, only have one vote. To obligate a, a future board at the 11th hour, that's not my style, and I'm not gonna do it. I would suggest that this action be tabled until executive session at our next meeting. And Ms. Wiley, this certainly would qualify for executive session, because you're talking about acquiring 25 acres of real estate. Is that not correct?
I'll give my opinion offline, if you don't mind. If that's okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
But land acquisition, if that doesn't qualify for executive session, I don't know what does, but-
It does. Land acquisition is the, the second session topic, sir, yes. I don't, no, well, Mr. Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Holder, on the point that you mentioned, that we don't know if funding will be available for Phase Two, again, according to this paragraph, if there is no funding available, and Ms. Comer's here, she can confirm, it says right here, this project will, is contingent upon us doing it based on those funds being there. If those funds are not there, as it says here, then we're not obligated, and is that not correct? And that, and by not a head, she's, Ms. Comer's saying that's correct. And again, from, my, my job as county manager was to proceed, as I was given, to get the bid done.
Understood.
The design work done, the bid done. That is what was done. Once the bid is completed, the board can accept or reject the bid, or the process of completing the runway. My job here was to bring it. Unfortunately, the strings that have been attached, as I've brought forth in paragraph 16, have come up, and I've explained them as best I can, without complete actual dollars, because I don't feel I had the ability to go start negotiating, you know, with those figures. I've tried to get an approximation and some things, and brought some people, as you heard today, to try to give you a range. And other than that, I don't know what else, other than to say, you know, if we had to get to the fine tuning, I can go do the fine tuning, or a team can go to the fine tuning, negotiate, or whatever else. But again, to give you the bids that are in, the low bidder is there, the cost to do Phase One, and again, the condition of Phase Two is what I have presented, because that is what now is in front of us, is to be able to get the grant money in Phase One. So as county manager, again, my task, if you would, was to get us to this point. Again, all along, the airport being purchased and trying to get the runway done, has always been with the expectation of being done by August 1st. So the timeline established was what I just mentioned earlier. And again, the presentation, as I just delivered, was with as much fact as I know at this time, to, to make it happen or not happening.
Mr. Preston.
One final thing is that, just from the, the pulse of what I dealt with when I was out there campaigning and elsewhere, is that the, I don't think there's a straight-up opposition to creating economic engines within the county. The problem that the, the public expressed to me was, they didn't like us buying stuff. You know, buying property was kind of the, and, and believe me, things are not as black and white as, as, as everything always seems outside looking in. So I, I don't say that to stir the pot. I just want, point of clarification, I heard something from the investment group. It seemed like there's some, you guys are already moving forward on trying to, to make some essential real estate magic happen on this process. I would, I would like, we have the 17th, we're not having a meeting on the 18th. I'd like to table this to the 17th, let the investment group see if they can take out that one barrier. That's, that's the complaint I'm hearing, is y'all quit buying, well, if we can do land swaps and other things that greatly reduce what Henry County is having to come up with, that addresses, now we've got the straight-up stripaway opportunity credits that will create $3,000 per job, and an economic engine in the county, that looks like a win to me. And I think it also creates where the, the investors know, we're, we're running out of time, we need to all come together, because we're, we've done our part. We've done the 2.7 million investment. Let's, let's give them time to, to make that happen. And I, and I think it could be a great thing for Henry County, because I, I support this. I want that to be clear. that to be clear, but I, I think there's a few things that need to be kind of neatened up a little bit to, to make this happen, and the 17th will be the perfect vote for that.
I don't disagree, and in presenting this, and working on this for umpteen months, and especially in the last week and a half, believe me, trying to get to the point of making it clear as to what the consequences are, and what the conditions are, again, is what I wanted to make sure you were aware of, but again, knowing what you're saying, I don't, I'd agree, I wish I could give you specificity, or more so, I'd love to tell you, here's the cost, do it, and we're done, don't have to move anything else, but that is a condition that is upon us to make this project work.
We're kind of, because this needs to happen before you're in, is the 17th enough time for you guys to, to work, no? No?
I just want to ask a question, is anything going to change on the 17th that hasn't been presented today?
The only thing that, again, mine was to present it and say, here's where we're at as of this moment, these are the conditions, this the estimates, this is, you know, some things are for certain, the, the cost to do Phase 1 is pretty certain, the bids and so on. The Phase 2 is, it's, you know, what range of dollars, as I mentioned, so as far as what's going to change, is if between now and the 17th.
Nothing.
If we can get the definition of the land swap, the amount of land, what it's going to cost, and the cost to make that land ready for the Speedway to use, for the like kind that they want. So, at the end of the day, that is something that, if it's myself that you've asked to sit down with the Speedway, or their parties, or the group that's the, the land that they want to buy, or a committee, or, or the county attorney, or whoever else, that between now and then can be a priority to get done, to present on the 17th, what progress has been made. Again, you mentioned land swap, again, if we swap land, the key there is, whatever the cost of that land we buy is going to be part of this $35,000 to $100,000 figure. Hopefully, a land swap from somebody who has an, an interest of seeing the airport go, for their acreage to have some benefit as well, and thus, us benefit from the property base, would be something that would be seriously considered in providing 26 or whatever acres of land, 31 or whatever the case may be, from that other group. So, to your direct point, I can't say with certainty we will, I do know that we can obviously have conversations, somebody, myself, or whoever, that gets us to the point of saying, on the 17th, you know, we're like US Congress, and the president, there's no, no progress, or the progress is this, and this is what it is.
From what it sounds like, everybody up here supports it, so no matter what, you know, what changes on the 17th, you know, everybody supports it, so we're going to end up moving forward with, with it anyway, so I suggest we just move forward with the vote.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Reed, you want to say?
Mr. Stamey.
I'm disappointed somebody's here, not here from the Speedway, I wish we had that element, because they're such a bigger player, the biggest part of this puzzle. If, if we had them on record saying they support this, or they're willing to do this, it does make all, all our decisions a little bit easier, but, and I don't know which way the vote's going to go, but I'm very much in support of the project, because I know the benefit behind the scenes of what's going on, and, you know, the benefit of the Speedway, being a major taxpayer in the county, I think there's a hidden benefit of there also with some future businesses, I know y'all been working hard, you know, behind the scenes, and I'm surprised you even let this cat out of the bag, and I appreciate you doing that, but if this thing is delayed, and I'm not sure what we're going to do, but if it's delayed, I'd like to see somebody from the Speedway here to, in support, not support one way or the other, on the, if we move it to the next vote.
And again, I spoke with Ed Clark, as I said, last Friday, after I got the final language of the contract, and of course, had the map, sent him a copy of the map to show him it, he was out of town, he called me, again, yesterday, like I said, mentioned I would be presenting this, and the fact that the 35 was being used, didn't ask him for his figure, he said he would have to talk to his people, Bruton Smith, the owner, and obviously, go that route, so as, as to whether he being here or not here, I don't think he was not here, because he, you know, hiding, if you would, but it's just last minute, telling him what it is, and again, trying to, he's been aware of the project, as already has been said, both by Carol and by Lynn, as to, for many, many, many years, in fact, I first got on this project, he almost was chastising me, it seemed, for the project having not been done already, because he's been talked about and talked about, and one of those, I'll believe it when I see it, even to the point of purchasing the airport. So, again, as been said, and you even know, the, the support's there now, at what figure, I can't tell you, he couldn't say, and as far as him being here, and, and committing, I, I don't think he could have done that anyways, without, again, Bruton of the board approval.
Mr. Bowman, you're one of the commissioners that hasn't weighed in on this, is there anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
Well, I understand Commissioner Holder's concerns, I really do. However, we've been working on this for a long time, I don't feel like this is something that we're rushing to tie the hands of a future board, I think that this has come up before, and that if all the decisions that we were going to make were on the incoming board, we, we should have just went home 1st of November, and then we wouldn't have had to come up here, we could just kind of, you know, stay at home, enjoy the family during the holidays. But I've been, I personally have been for the airport, I do feel like that it's an economic engine. I do understand GDOT, when the lady, Liz Carroll, stated that there will be a, a, there will be a, two appraisals done, and that we know from the past appraisals, that those appraisals were very fair, if not overboard by FAA, they were, they, they recognized the appraiser, I think they chose one of the appraisers, or they, it was on their list, one of the two, I can't remember exactly, but I, when I seen the appraisal after FAA done it, I thought, wow, who's getting pretty good money for it. So, you know, at the end of the day, we make a decision, we, heck, we, we can close down now, we can wait till after 1st of the year. I'm on the new board coming in, but I feel like this is not something that, it, it was, when people bring up that, oh, I just don't want to do it, I don't want to do it, I don't want to tie future hands, my gosh, we've tied future hands ever since we sat down up here, and the thing about it is, is that when we get into that mode, you know, we were still elected to do a job to serve four years, and I'm for the, I'm for the airport, been for it, I've never wavered on that, I, I'm like, I, I do appreciate Commissioner Preston, the, having a dollar amount tied down, I mean, that's the, yeah, I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to walk into something and give them a blank check, you know, fill out what you want for your property. I would like to know a little bit more about that, but I think DOT, and I think that she, that Carol answered a good portion of that question, and I think that the other guys have answered the question about property swaps and some of the other stuff, though again, I'm, you know, these guys talking about bringing a race team, that, that'd be awesome, I think there's, I think there's so much more to it than that, but I mean, that's a good start. I know that some of the opposition said, well, we wasn't selling enough gas out there to, to help pay for the fuel, I did make a comment to one of them, if we wanted to get in the gas selling business, we'd buy a couple of service stations, you know, that's a lot easier to sell gas than it is airport fuel, so, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we've made the move, we've been working on it, it's not, it's not something that popped up yesterday, and that's my opinion, I'm entitled to it, so that's all I have to say on it, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have Mr. Goff come back up, and one other point.
I want to return to a comment that Commissioner Preston made about Bruton Smith, I've known him for 27 years, and he's absolutely the most eccentric man I've ever known in my life, and you're right, he is a personal, his tracks are his personal toys, his business is running automobile dealerships, but we do know that the airport, as you said, this is not a simple process, and I'll make this very clear, and I've been involved with NASCAR since 89, three years on a day-to-day process, there are, there is dialogue to bring the second race back here, bringing one of the New Hampshire races. Now, it's a complicated situation, you know, there's only, only so many dates out here, but we need to remember that if we provide a tool to NASCAR and Bruton and Ed to get that second race back, Mike Bush can tell you, that will make a significant impact on the economics of this county, and you can't discount that when we lost that second race, you saw some decreases with the waiters, and the servers, and the Wendy's, and the restaurants, so again, that's just a fact, and Randy can address this, I mean, it's a, it's a huge deal to have a NASCAR race, and that's why so many want them. To that point, ProMaker, three months ago, was able to facilitate a meeting with Ed Clark, Lynn Westmoreland, and Nathan Deal, to negotiate bringing back a race. What do we have to do? To that point, the governor has committed to Ed and Bruton to involve the State Department of Tourism to promote Henry County and Atlanta Motor Speedway. So, let's remember that there's a bigger opportunity here, especially in that sports arena, we talk a lot about the race team, there's also a truck team, Mr. Bowman, that wants to move from Michigan, so all of a sudden, we have two, because one guy's coming, oh, that must be a pretty good place, I'm going to come too, and we have up to 100 acres that we could master plan, like they did in Mooresville, North Carolina. Don't want to get too far off that track, what I want to do is make sure you're aware that there are other incremental opportunities that will come with this airport, more so than just landing planes.
Okay, okay. All right, well, if there is, no further questions for our county manager, you have before you a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing the acceptance of a GDOT contract for the extension and widening of the airport runway, and certification of funding, and I'll look to someone to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Bowman to approve the resolution, is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries 4-2, with Bowman, Holmes, Stamey, and Mathis in favor, and Holder and Preston in opposition. All right, the next item on the agenda, before we move to that, let's, let's back up, because we've been rather lengthy here, we do have a proclamation that needs to be made, and I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Holder, who is our senior member of the board. We're, we're going to, we're going to back up to the proclamation, and then we have to come back and do the other two.
Okay, I apologize, it just.
That's okay.
I was just reminded there were two others.
That's okay.
I apologize.
All right, we'll be back to that in just a moment. Mr. Holder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we want to recognize and honor a person who has been a part of this county for a long time, been very instrumental in the development of this county. I'd like to ask Lindy Farmer to come to the podium. While Lindy's on his way up, Lindy is the type, it's modest, we had to come up with all kind of ways to get Lindy, if you'll go to the podium right there, Lindy, we had to craft a way to, to get him here. And in this proclamation, as we all know, when someone has been involved as long as Lindy, you can't put it all in a proclamation, it's just impossible. I'm going to read the proclamation, but I want to make some comments first, because, as I said, you can't put them all in, in the proclamation. The Water Authority in itself, and we've all heard, have been very visionary as a group. Lindy's been the general manager for so long, and we'll get to that in the proclamation, but assembled around Lindy, which he took care of the day-to-day operations, was a great legal team, a great engineering team, and a good group of employees and staff. And much of that has to go back to Lindy, because Lindy was able to work with board members, there have been board members on the Water Authority that have served through several commissioners, that's pretty hard in itself to be able to keep your seat. The turnover rate of employees at the Water Authority, probably the lowest of any organization that I'm aware of, and last but not least, one of the most recent. Lindy was approached about the collection fee of the two-mill tax, and by law, with excellent craftsmanship, the Water Authority, by legislation, was not required to pay a collection fee. When I asked Lindy about this, because every other agency, whether it be the hospital authority, or anybody, the school board, if we collect, we being Henry County collects their taxes, they pay. Remember, the Water Authority by law was not required. Lindy said, let me take it back to my board, I want to do the right thing, the right thing. And with that, the Water Authority has started to participate in phase in to paying their proportionate share of the two-mill tax, and pay the collection fee for that. And I just want to say, thank you, Lindy, because you didn't have to do it, but it was the right thing. I'd like to read this proclamation honoring Lindy Farmer for 30 years of service as the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority General Manager. Whereas Lindy Farmer Jr. has resided in Henry County, Georgia, since his early childhood, and was educated in Henry County schools, whereas on March 1st, 1982, the Board of Directors of the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority hired Lindy Farmer as its first full-time General Manager. Whereas upon his arrival as Authority General Manager, Lindy Farmer brought vision, leadership, and industry expertise to the Authority, and provided structure to a rapidly expanding rural utility. Whereas Lindy Farmer led Henry County Water in pursuit of some of its most critical capital projects for the county and Authority to date, including approximately 1,200 miles of water lines, and 600 miles of sewer lines, all five reservoirs, all four wastewater treatment plants, and most recently, the Tussah Hall Water Treatment Facility. Whereas under Lindy Farmer's leadership, Henry County Water has been recognized as having the best-operated water and wastewater plants in the state of Georgia by the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, and the system continues to be recognized as one of the best in the state. Whereas during his tenure, the Authority received the Southeast Region Award of Merit from the Association of Dam Safety Officials, an honor bestowed upon one utility in a 12-state region, and Puerto Rico, for excellence in operations, notably for the safe design, construction, and maintenance of its reservoir dams. Whereas as a result of Lindy Farmer's leadership, and an intergovernmental agreement between the Authority Board and the Henry County Board of Commissioners, Henry County received the designation of Water First Community from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The Authority was also designated a Water Sense Promotional Partner by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Whereas Lindy Farmer is a lifetime member of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, which is the highest industry honor attainable for his profession. Whereas Lindy Farmer is the longest-tenured chief executive of a water utility in the state of Georgia, having served for 30 years as General Manager of the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Henry County recognizes that Mr. Lindy Farmer is a key leader in Henry County, whose vision and leadership has contributed to the outstanding quality of life enjoyed by the citizens of our community, and further that he be honored for his 30 years of dedicated service to our community and the water industry, as the General Manager of the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, which has evolved into one of the best utilities in the state under his leadership. Congratulations, Lindy.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to make a comment? I'd like for you to comment, and I'd like for you to come over and have a photograph. I'd like for you to comment, and I'd like for you to come over and have a photograph.
Well, I'm really not prepared for this, and-
I wonder why.
Obviously. I thought I was here for another meeting, but, you know, this is quite an honor for someone like myself to have grown up in Henry County, and all my family resides here. My kids, it's pretty emotional. As an individual, who's been very blessed and fortunate to have been able to work in a community that I grew up in, try to try and just improve and to help where it can help. But, you know, a lot of this, and the credit, is to an organization, the county commissions, but certainly the Water Authority, Water Authority Board. Mr. Gardner, who hired me, who really took a chance. Buddy Welch, who we spent long hours, probably in disagreement, but at the end of the day, we always agreed to disagree to disagree. Mr. Al Smith, Mr. Jimmy Carter, our current chairman, who continues to lead us down the road. But this group of people, they've had such a vision, and they've been very focused. And for that, that's all that was concerned, basically, for the betterment of the county, was providing good quality drinking water and the environment. And for these people, I'm so proud to be associated with that. And I can't say enough about the employees of the Water Authority. You know, it's not any one person or board or any particular individual, but as a team, and I think the team, the team, the Water Authority team, has done its best. Though it's been pointed out many times, it's not a perfect organization, but we continue to strive and want to be the best we can be. And I'm very honored, very flattered, very embarrassed. Thank you very much.
You're joining us over here for a photograph.
Okay. You do hear that, don't you? Okay. I'm gonna make a little observation here while we have people who are leaving the room. It can be noted that the Water Authority tends to hold on to their managers a little bit longer than county government. Have y'all noticed that?
Absolutely.
Not to scare you, Mr. Alletta. We cycle through them pretty often, so. All right. We hope to keep you around a long time. I don't know what that noise is.
It's the lights up here. She's turned all the lights down.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda, and the next item is a resolution requesting the contract award for Phase One, the 1,000-feet runway extension and taxi extension, rehabilitate the existing runway and widen to 100 feet, and lighting improvements for Atlanta South Regional Airport, and that's Exhibit Number 13.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As I indicated in the previous presentation, it was all tied together. You couldn't really look at one with the other. As I indicated in the presentation prior to the, part of the present, part of the award, this is what this is entailing. Here is the 3 million, excuse me, the 2,603, part of this. This 2,603 are the bids to do Phase One, which is what this resolution's all about. There were five sealed bids received, one of them ended up being non-responsive. You'll find in your packet on page 4, the bid for Schnell, ER Schnell, was 2,603, 520.78. The next lowest bid was 2 million, was Haney, at 2,832, 283. And then it goes up from there to over 3 million, and then over 5 million. The request of the resolution is to accept the lowest bidder to complete, as you indicated, the Phase One 1,000-foot runway taxiway extension and widening and lighting improvements.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? And that is item number 14 in your book, not 13. If there are no questions, you have before you a resolution of the board approving Phase One runway extension, taxiway extension, rehab of the existing runway and widen to 100 feet and lighting improvements, and I will entertain a motion. Okay. A motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Holder in opposition. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of a professional services agreement with Croy Engineering pertaining to capital improvements at Atlanta South Regional Airport, and that is going to be item number 15 in your book.
As was the work that was done to get us the bid and, designing bid work to get us to the point of being able to get the bids out and get the bids back. The next phase is to have the engineer that, Croy, to proceed with, working in the construction phase. They are, they have been vetted in their price, and as you see by the grant approval, included in the grant approval is their $223,000, 223,420. Again, it is included in the overall cost of the grant that was approved in the prior resolution at the 95 percent. This is to get the project completed through the construction phase, as well as taking care of the odds and ends that happen at the end of the construction to get GDOT approvals and FAA approvals so that the airport runway is usable at the end of the construction.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the professional agreement with Croy Engineering, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 4-1 with Holmes, Bowman, Staney, and Mathis in favor, and Commissioner Holder in opposition. And just as a follow-up comment, as most of you are probably aware, as chairman of the board, I typically do not vote, but I wanna make it perfectly clear that I do support this airport project 100 percent, and that's why I am choosing to vote on all three of these resolutions. We're moving on to public safety. We have a resolution requesting authorization to use asset forfeiture and seized funds for Command College tuition. Our presenter is Major Mark Ammerman of the Police Department, and that's Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. About two years ago, we authorized Lieutenant Niebel and Lieutenant Rosen to use seized funds, and it's already been approved by the board. They're almost done going to school. Over the last two years, Columbus State has gone up on tuition twice. With that happening, they've come up short from the original amount we asked, so we're asking to use some more seized funds to let them finish the program, for both of them to finish it with total $1,722.10.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Holder. No, I didn't. No. That was- Major Ammerman, this is actually not to this. It pertains to it, though. Previously, we approved a resolution for someone to go to Command College, last meeting or meeting before last, and the person that was presenting stated that everyone that goes to Command College already has a four-year degree, and that this goes towards a master. I was called by several people that it's not a policy or recommendation of our police department that they have a four-year degree, but the statement was made in public, so I felt like I needed to clear it up in public. Number one, do you have to have a four-year degree in order to, for the police department to choose you to go to the Command College?
No. You can also do the certificate program through it. So far, the ones that have gone, to the best of my knowledge, have already all had four-year degrees. I know Sergeant Patton, myself, a few others have gone through the PMP program or the Professional Management Program, which is also through Columbus State under the Command College guidelines. So, there's other things that undergraduates can go to.
So, it's not a requirement? It's, that was kind of the tone that was set when it was asked for last time, and I was for it last time. I voted for it last time, but, I mean, I just wanted to set it clear so that, you know, people that were watching. I've had several people say, you know, you got a lot of people in the police department have four-year degrees, and I said, "Well, truthfully, we do have a lot of people in the police department with four-year degrees." But I said, "I don't," I mean, that's, when they asked, I said, "Well, I'll ask the question, and then we'll go." But I'm just clearing it up, just so that TV land, and they can, they know that it's, while it's, you know, it's not our policy, but a lot of them have four-year degrees that have already gone through it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the expenditures of the asset forfeiture and seized funds to pay for expenses related to Command College, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. The next item is under transit. We have a resolution requesting approval and award of the proposal to furnish low-voltage voice data and fiber optic cabling at the new transit facility. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number Four in your book. Good morning.
Comtech Communications currently has an approved annual contract with Henry County to provide low-voltage data and fiber optic cabling services. They've submitted a proposal in the amount of $41,641.32. This would be reimbursed to the federal transit administration. There's no local match required.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Staney?
David, this is 100 percent refundable.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, you have before you a resolution approving and awarding the proposal to furnish the items detailed, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder to approve, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approve, let's see, approval and award of proposal to furnish network equipment at the new transit building. That's gonna be Exhibit Number Five.
Yes, ma'am. AdCap Network Systems currently also has an approved annual contract with Henry County to provide network equipment. They've submitted a proposal in the amount of $11,583.04 to complete the project. This will also be reimbursable through the federal transit administration. There's no local match required.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The final item under transit is a resolution requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number One for the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Contract, and that's Exhibit Number Six in your book.
This amendment will add $44,894.67 to the current contract. They've anticipated that additional funds will be needed to pay for the transportation services here in Henry County. This particular contract is a fee for service, so there's no local match required.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item?
I have one question, and that's just strictly for the public. David, since you've been at transit, and I don't expect you to have the exact numbers, but in general terms, general numbers, how much has the ridership increased, and these funds increased from your, in your time?
The numbers have increased somewhere, I believe, I was working with Julie earlier today, somewhere around, we're looking probably around $20,000 for this year in addition over what it was back in '09. This particular grant has, I believe, has probably doubled the reimbursement that we've been able to draw down with the state and continues. This may or may not be the last amendment where they are adding money to it, depending on our needs down here. That changes every year, and it has increased.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve, and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Before I leave, I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Massif, Staney, and Holder, and wish y'all the best for 2013.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Moving on to the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution requesting approval to authorize the chairman and the county attorney to sign GDOT right-of-way agreement for Phillips Drive and State Route 2081. Our presenter is David Simmons of DOT, and that's Exhibit Number Seven in your book. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is an item, as she stated, for authorizing the chairman and the county attorney to sign a GDOT right-of-way agreement associated with the potential joint project with City of McDonough through their funds and their funds through GDOT state aid for Phillips Drive at 81. On these particular projects, GDOT requires that the right-of-way agreement be provided by the county or by who purchased the right-of-way, which the county is the one that acquired the right-of-way there.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
I have one question, David. I think it's basically normal, but there was a maintenance clause in this agreement for us to maintain. How can we maintain on a state route?
I think typically, the intent is to maintain on the county side road where-
It's what?
I would think the intent is we're maintaining Phillips Drive itself.
I wanted to make that clear, because, you know, we can't go out and maintain a state route unless, without their permission.
Correct.
And the reason, I wanted to bring that to attention, because it says in there that we would be responsible for maintenance. Well, I know we're responsible on Phillips Drive part of it, but 2081, just wanted to make it clear for the record.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the chairman and county attorney to sign the GDOT agreement, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me answer a question.
This $600,000, is that GDOT money?
The $600,000 in state aid, that's the, yes, that's GDOT state aid to the City of McDonough, $600,000.
Okay.
That is to City of McDonough, and I'm glad you brought that up. I was just leaning to the border.
No, here we go.
No, it is. That award was to the City of McDonough, and that portion of Georgia 20 is not south of McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Staney. He likes pushing your buttons.
No, I just thought he was on the verge of getting some money for his, in that District One.
That is District One.
I know, but as far as GDOT.
Went through the City of McDonough all the way. It didn't come to him.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. The next item is under Planning and Zoning Services. We have a resolution to amend the current county code of ordinances by adding provisions to address amusement game rooms. Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Chief Keith Nichols of the Henry County Police Department are here to present exhibit number eight in your book. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Some time back, we began working on an amended ordinance to address specifically some of the activities associated with amusement game rooms, principally as they relate to those being located in convenience stores and some restaurants. In recent years, and the chief can speak more specifically on, some of the issues that they've had that have been associated with these locations. And so, in researching the matter, we found an ordinance located that's currently incorporated by the City of Warner Robins, and it seemed to, speaking with chief, it seemed to incorporate a lot of the elements that they felt would be beneficial for our jurisdiction to help them in helping to regulate those type of businesses and to respond accordingly. Turned out the chief's got some pictures. Y'all have a brief video from a newscast. I'll tee that up.
Mainly going back all the way to when I was the commander of our Narcotics Division before we merged with the Task Force. I received numerous complaints from people that, who had family members, or that were going into, because I don't want it to get confused in any way, shape, or form with an establishment that's set up for like Ski Ball, where kids go in, or anybody can go in, pinball machines or anything like that. But what was happening is unfortunately, we had these video poker machines, style machines that you'd find out in Las Vegas, or Cherokee, North Carolina, or any other gambling establishment, because they were actually legal in the state of Georgia, the machine itself. A lot of convenience stores, gas stations began putting these machines in their establishments. Now, the only caveat was, through state law, is that you could not pay off in cash prizes tobacco, alcohol, other items such as that. And it became very confusing, because you would have people that were sitting in a convenience store all day long playing one of these machines, and the reality of it is, was all they could win was a case of Beanie Weenies, and that didn't make a lot of sense. So obviously, we start getting a lot of complaints that these establishments are actually paying out. Well, the difficulty is, is we would have to go in, in an undercover capacity, start spending money, and hopefully, in that we would win, and then we would go to the front and get paid out. A lot of times, these establishments have what they would call regular customers that come and go on a regular basis. They would establish credibility, and therefore, they would get paid out. Well, it's difficult for us to go in and do that. The other issue is, is that when we did go in, when we did win, and when we did get paid out, it was only a misdemeanor, and we could only arrest the person that was paying out. And what we've seen transition over the years is a lot of establishments open up specifically for the purpose of these machines. Now, they've kind of transitioned over from a couple in a convenience store to an establishment. In this past spring, we initiated raids on three of these establishments, and I think Michael Harris has a video that basically is what we're trying to get a hold of, confront, and if he wants to play the video, and then I have some still pictures of an actual location that we raided back in the spring in Henry County.
Here's a quick, two-minute video, and this happened, this occurred recently. It's from a newscast from WSB, and just from this past October, and it speaks to the same situation that other jurisdictions are dealing with. I promise you, it worked when I tried it out before the meeting.
Why, we're making a little video, chief. Once these ordinances are adopted, I know one of the problems prior to this, and you and I've had conversation about these issues, do you think the DA will prosecute now on some of this?
Well, again-
In the past, they wouldn't.
Right. Again, it would give us more leverage, or at least I felt would give us more leverage, and I was going to show you some photographs from a location up in Stockbridge, where the front of the business was blacked out. You know, you couldn't walk by. You had to be buzzed into the location. They had outside cameras that were focused on the front door, so they could see who was standing there, whether or not they wanted to let them in. So that's what we're trying to address here, is several specific issues that we've ran up against. Again, and it is a very difficult thing to prosecute, because you have to spend the funds. Then you have to, if you really target the business itself, and you have to go after the owner, you have to be able to articulate why you believe they knew that payouts were happening. And that's rather difficult, because obviously, they're trying to distance themselves, and that's why a lot of times, all we do is get, you know, a clerk that's being paid on an hourly basis to man a cash register and payout or whatever. So I believe it will give us more leverage. I'm not saying that we can combat all these payouts, but I just believe it's going to give us more leverage to prosecute without having to dip into funds, and a lot of times, we don't get those funds back just to make a misdemeanor case.
I guess, again, a real question was, do you think that the DA, once this is in place, and-
Well, in ordinance-
-will be willing to prosecute?
Because this will be an ordinance, this will be prosecuted under our county attorney, and state court.
This will be misdemeanor cases and not felony violations, and so it would not go to the district attorney's office, depending on the officers, how the officer's charged. I don't know if there's a, there are corresponding, if there are corresponding state laws. It's within the officer's discretion sometimes to charge a misdemeanor or a felony, perhaps. I don't know where that line is drawn, but this could be just a county ordinance violation as opposed to a state law violation.
Correct.
And our ordinance will only be prosecuted in magistrate court or state court.
In the past, what we've tried to do is, we've tried to prosecute under RICO Act, but there's a lot more involved and in-depth into it, and I think, just going back a couple years ago with the Backwoods case, I think we ran into some issues with the prosecution of that particular case, and getting into discovery and issues such as that, that we'd rather stay away from if we're going to get in cases such as that. I've got a couple still shots, and this was a location called Lucky Bob's, and this was up on Rockwell Road in Stockbridge, and it's very dark, and difficult to see in, obviously, and that's for a reason. But right here, as you'll note, this is the front entrance of the business. Not only do they have the front windows blacked out, but you can see drapes and curtains, and the only reason you can even see anything is that's a lamp that's turned on. And of course, when you walk in this, there's a row of the machines. Now, the machines can be one or two things. They can either be legal machines, according to state statute, or illegal. And to make it a legal machine, all it has to do is be a skill associated with it. And as simple as that sounds, a skill is, if you get two spins, and you get two oranges and one apple, you hold your two, the two oranges to get another orange. So that's a skill. So that qualifies for illegal game in the state of Georgia. And I might be simplifying a little bit, but I think we only had like one or two actual machines that were illegal in this business, but we were able to, because they were paying out, and I think actually, Fred, when you were a District Two Commissioner, we actually worked together on this because of an individual that had came to you and was concerned, and we actually, that's what started us and got us into this bit. But this is the front of the business.
Ticket's running down. Finally.
Bringing these machines back into spotlight, not only are the cash payouts from these machines illegal, but taxpayers are losing out on millions of tax dollars.
With cameras rolling, Gwinnett County officers raided this location in Lawrenceville after a Channel 2 Action News undercover investigation revealed illegal cash payouts happening here.
Why am I losing?
Rows of video slot machines, with people sitting for hours, hoping for that coveted cash payout. We once again went undercover in the back rooms of convenience stores and found several locations in Gwinnett County offering cash payouts. We sent two undercover producers into three locations in Lawrenceville, and at each one, we were paid cash.
Yeah, so then if you hit, she'll bring you $400.
Sherry Alkak says she has lost well over $100,000 to video slot machines over the past few years.
You believe that this is going to happen, because I put so much money in there, so it gotta give me something back, right?
Channel 2 Action News is constantly receiving tips about illegal gambling operations, despite a ban by the state in 2002. It came after a series of Channel 2 Action News investigations that got the attention of former Governor Roy Barnes.
I have difficulty of the state allowing its citizens really to be victimized.
Barnes immediately pushed legislation to ban video poker and slot machines, saying it was harming families and creating gambling addicts.
Husbands would stop at a convenience store where this was going on, cash a check, and then go home not having anything.
Georgia is considering legal casino gambling, which would rake in millions of dollars for the state. Right now, all the profits coming from the back rooms of convenience stores like this one go untaxed. The illegal backroom operations have copied legal casinos with incentives to keep you gambling.
When you go in a store, you can eat anything you want. You can drink anything you want. If you do hit, they pay you right away.
And at this location on Grayson Highway in Lawrenceville, they did just that, opening up machines to collect the cash, a tactic Eric Cockling of the Georgia Family Council says they use to keep players hooked.
And because they offer immediate rewards, the whole experience is intended to keep you there as long as possible, until they actually run out of money.
Governor Barnes says the anti-gambling law has been altered dramatically. He says legislators have watered down the law, making it harder for law enforcement to crack down.
We have casino gambling in Georgia unregulated, and apparently authorized by the general segment.
Now, we showed you a little bit of Gwinnett County police raiding those stores where we first went undercover. It was just 24 hours ago. They went in and confronted several store owners, and we were there with them. The findings from their undercover investigation, and the reaction from one of those store owners, that's coming up on Channel 2 Action News, all new at 6:00. And the thing here is, regardless of where you stand on the gambling issue, it's tax dollars Georgia's missing out on. A lot of tax dollars. All right, thanks, John.
We'll see you at 6:00.
And the last thing I would like to show is, this is, of course, the back of Lucky Bob's. If you entered the other way, that's what you would see. And the last thing, I know that sometimes people say, well, gambling is a victimless crime. We also, I'm trying to obscure the face, because I don't know, but that picture was taken in Lucky Bob's by an individual. That's an individual right here. That was the photo that we recovered out of Lucky Bob's. We also recovered some drugs, and I believe we actually located two illegal weapons. We ended up making three arrests in that particular location.
So again, what we're asking for this morning is authorization to amend our current ordinance to add these sections. And again, we took a lot of the basis from the ordinance that's previously been in place in the City of Warner Robins, and that's been amended. We feel best suits, you know, our local needs. And I also want to note that the chief and Major Rossborough, they've been working in close connection with the other, the four cities as well, and right now, they stand poised to adopt, if not the exact, something very similar to what we have, so we're all consistent throughout the entire county.
All right. I'm sure y'all have been working on this for quite some time, but I want to ask the county attorney, because I know the last couple of weeks, we've had very intense loss negotiations going on. You've spent countless hours in depositions and haven't had a lot of time to review, but did you have an opportunity to look through this?
Yes, I have, Chairman. Actually, Michael sent this to me several months ago, and if you'll notice in your agenda books, there is a markup version. That's all my handwriting and questions, and I reviewed the proposal before you, and they've answered all my questions sufficiently, and taken my concerns, and made the necessary revisions, so I'm comfortable with the final product.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Chief, will we be able to go into the cities that have police forces and enforce any of this, or is that going to be up to the cities themselves?
Well, it will be the Task Force primarily, which it is, which it is now, which that's the beauty of this Task Force, is that we cross jurisdictional boundaries with the Task Force, so it will primarily be up to them. But again, we, you know, if they choose to adopt the same one we have, everybody will be uniform, and if a police officer in Hampton sees a violation, they could go in, and it wouldn't be exclusive to the Task Force, versus the same with us. If one of my police officers saw a violation right off the bat, they could make an arrest, too.
One of the things that I've been told by, this has gone on for a number of years. I mean, this is nothing new. One of the things I was told by some of our previous, they may still be on CID, I don't know, but a reluctance from our judicial to prosecute any of this, is that still a factor, or was it ever a factor, to your knowledge of me?
Well, I don't necessarily think it was anything nefarious. It's just that when a case is made, they like all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and everything, and again, because the way, and this is my opinion, the way the legislation is written, it made it very difficult to prosecute, and that's why we looked at the approach of how to go about this, because I have wives calling me, I have, you know, grandmothers calling me. So that's why we looked at, you know, taking, putting the ball in our court and saying, well, look, let's, if we're going to complain about the way legislation is written, just the way that article, you know, stated, well, let's do something about it, and that's why we created this ordinance. And we looked around, and I think Warner Robins, and a lot of this in the legislation, just, you know, because you go in some of these convenience stores, and what they do, they've got these machines all the way to the back, and that makes it clandestine. Well, now, you can't have that. You can't do that. You have to, you know, and a lot, and I've seen the transition from a lot of these convenience stores where they, where initially, they were up front, and they weren't real reticent about doing illegal activity there, and now they've moved into the back, which I think that gives everybody a more, even more comfort. But, so that's what we're trying to address here. So hopefully, this will help out with that, and I don't see any issues with prosecution. Again, I think our local prosecutors were only utilizing the tools that they had available to them also.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to amend the county code of ordinances by adding sections 13-15-3 through sections 3-15-11 addressing amusement game rooms, and I'll entertain- entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamen and a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution to amend the current county code of ordinances, Section 3-14-50, persons eligible for retail licensing. Michael Harris Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit Number Nine. Good morning again.
Good morning again. We've actually looked at the alcohol ordinance on a number of occasions. Most recently, we've amended it a few months back to address some eligibility requirements. And over time, we've noticed that our methodology that we had, that we had in our current ordinance to, that we currently use to measure the distances between establishments which sell alcohol and those which are prohibited, those which where there are proximity restrictions such as churches, schools, treatment centers. We were looking for, to make sure we had a consistent methodology for making that measurement. And as we reviewed other jurisdictions, we found that the most consistent one, we felt the best, in our best interest, to look at one where the current Georgia Department of Revenues, they have a definition that they utilize for their, and how they define the measurement and how they, and how they clearly defines how you go about making that measurement. So we felt it was in the best interest to go ahead and adopt that same methodology for our ordinance, so make sure we're consistent with some other state organizations. I mean, a lot of the language comes from the state code as well. So we felt it was, it made good sense to utilize the same language that the state uses, in this case, Department of Revenues, to make the measurement from the location selling the alcohol to either the church, the school, or another package store, or a treatment center. Put that in there. And so what we're proposing today is just to amend Section 3-1450, 13F, just F, to change and further clarify the exact methodology we use to measure that distance, because before it was relatively vague, and we just wanted to make sure we're being consistent with the state language.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, I want to make note too that we do have someone here from Occupational Tax, and Eve Young, and is your title Director or Coordinator? Okay, so you guys, if you take a look, that will be here, she will be the one you'll be working with if you have any issues with this in the future.
Yes, thank you. He's been real helpful in this.
If we could, in the proposed ordinance, in the same manner that the state, Georgia State Department of Revenue has delineated the applications that occur before an effective date and the ones that, the measurement requirements that apply after an effective date, I think we should make that in our ordinance. So prior to December 4th, 2012, these measurement restrictions will apply, which will be our old one.
Okay.
And then after the effective date, if the board approves it, we'll have the new measurements. And that way, the folks who are grandfather under the old ordinance provision will be clear that they're not in violation of our ordinance. I think that'll bring clarity to the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Miley. All right, if there are no questions or comments from the board, you have before you a resolution to amend the ordinance in this section as it pertains to persons eligible for retail license, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to amend Chapter 3-13, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs of the Henry County Code to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, at select county-owned facilities. Our presenter, Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Tim Cooley, Parks and Recreation Director, Exhibit Number Nine. Actually, that's gonna be Exhibit Number Ten.
Thank you again. Staffs recently been contacted, received a request from a resident inquiring about the ability to sell and consume alcoholic beverages at certain select county-owned facilities. In reviewing our ordinance, we noted that it did not, our current ordinance, as it currently states, does not provide for the sale or consumption of alcohol within our county parks. So Tim and I have been asked to do is just present a, present for consideration by the board, an amendment to our current code that would allow the consumption of, the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for special events at three select county locations, those being Nash Farm Park, Heritage Park, and the Locust Grove Event Center. And I'll read it quickly, just the amendment that we're proposing, or that we're putting up for your consideration. Under Section 3-13-4, under prohibited, under prohibited acts within our county parks, Item Number Six currently reads, "It shall be unlawful for any intoxicated person to enter or remain in any park or recreational area. It shall also be unlawful for any person to consume or use alcoholic beverages or intoxicants in any park or recreational area." Section that is being presented for, for consideration is the addition of Item A, which states, "The sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, shall be permissible at the following county-owned locations only, Nash Farm Park, Heritage Park, Locust Grove Event Center, and shall meet the following conditions: Written approval from the Henry County Recreation Commission for each proposed event, shall meet all applicable local jurisdictional requirements, and noted Locust Grove and McDonough, because two of those facilities are located within those respective cities' jurisdictions, meet the requirements of Henry County Code Section 3-1422, which speaks to the hours at which alcohol may be served, obtain and provide a caterer's license from Henry County Business License." We're working with Eve Young again with, on this issue. The city of McDonough has a provision for a caterer's license. I don't know that we currently have one at this point, so that may be something that we need to be discussed. A police offer, conditioned that a police officer must be present for the duration of the event, and that would be done at the applicant's expense, and any other stipulations imposed by the Recreation Commission. So again, Tim and I are here to answer any questions. We're asked to just kind of present this and bring it to the board for your consideration.
I do have one comment I'd like to make and ask the board to take this in consideration. You will notice in your executive summary that we have three parks listed. It's Nash Farm Park, Heritage Park, and Locust Grove Event Center. Our District Two Commissioner is not here, and one of those parks lie in his district. I don't know that anyone's had a conversation with him, and I'd like to ask the board to consider tabling this to the next meeting at least, so that he has an opportunity to vote on something that's going to directly affect something that lies in his district.
Sure, Chair, I was gonna make that suggestion too, because there's a lot more information I need on this. So with that same thought, I'd like to make a notion we table this until another board, another meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and then a second by Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holder, you have a comment?
Before we do it, I think it's the right thing to do. The, this will be done, I'm assuming, at the next meeting, correct? I'm not an advocate for alcohol by any stretch, don't use alcohol. But the only way that these venues are going to be used to the fullest extent and to return money to the, to the county for the investment that we've put into those facilities, alcohol's gonna have to be offered. And I agree with what you're saying about District Two, because of the three parks that are considered, Nash Farm's the only one that's actually in the county, the other two are in the city, so he does need to be here. But, and we're gonna use Heritage as an example. There have been concerts at Heritage, none of which have really made it big. There've been some good-named concerts out there, but until one of the first things is asked, can we serve beer? No, you can't. We could have had the Coca-Cola family of drivers at Nash Farm Park for their party when it came to Atlanta Motor Speedway, but, Tim, we couldn't serve alcohol, is that not correct?
That's correct.
And they, they chose another location. So we talked earlier this morning about the economic impact and the economic engine that surrounds the airport. Nash Farm is only a rock's throw from that and can be a part of it and a contributor for, to the economic growth in that area. So again, that's, I don't like alcohol, don't particularly care for it, but the numbers of the people, I'm certainly outnumbered in that, because most, most people do, and I think that before these have become viable venues, you're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be allowed, and these are ways that this can be done. I believe the attorney has advised through a lease agreement, then it ends up getting out of the hands of the county. And I know that the plans for next year, many of which have to be made in the fourth quarter and in December of this year to get funding for next year's events, it's gonna be required that we make a decision if we want to go in that direction, so that they can acquire some support for events that are upcoming in 2013. So just thoughts, and I know we have a motion second on the floor, that's just for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. There's no further discussion, all in favor of tabling to the next meeting? All right, motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Item D has been tabled for this meeting, so the next item is under finance, and this is a resolution requesting approval to adopt the amended and restated ACCG 457B Deferred Compensation Plan, the Master Trust Agreement to allow ACCG Denied Contributions Board the power to amend the 2012 457B Plan for Non-Discretionary IRS Amendments and the Adoption of the Administrative Services Agreement. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and I know he's gonna put this in layman's terms, and I'm assuming that's Exhibit Number 12 in your book. I think all of our numbers are all five out of one on your exhibit. That's correct, Exhibit Number 12.
Yes, Madam, good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. Yesterday, we brought before you information dealing with the Henry County Defined Benefit Plan, which is the mandatory plan that all full-time employees are currently in. Henry County went from a 457-401 plan to that Defined Benefit Plan, but kept the ability for employees who wanted to put more money away for retirement to be able to do so using the 457 vehicle. That is not a mandatory plan, it is only a plan that allows people to put additional money in above the 6% required for the Defined Benefit Plan. So today, we're gonna talk only about this 457 Deferred Compensation Plan for Henry County. The 457 Plan is a plan that is adopted by the Board of Commissioners. This is a county plan for all employees. The, one of the changes that have been made today is that of the 159 counties, I don't know how many of them that are with Gebcor, but Gebcor creates a 457 plan that all counties have. Everything is the same in the plan, and then they get, we have what's called an adoption agreement which kind of customizes the plan to Henry County. Each other jurisdiction has their own adoption agreement which customizes it to the different counties. And the following slides will be showing the particular changes that have been brought upon at this time. And I want to back up one second to the actual resolution. The resolution asks for the Board of Commissioners to do four things with, with this presentation, and it would be no wonder now therefore it be resolved. It asks for the approval of the Adoption and Administrative Services Agreement, and we'll talk about that, the Master Trust and the 2000, well, the Master Trust, we'll talk about that, the 2012 457B Plan and accompanying adoption agreement as amended and restated of the ACCG 457 Deferred Compensation Plan in Henry County. And then also, they're asking Henry County Board of Commissioners to delegate to the ACCG Defined Contribution Board the power to amend the 2012 457B Plan on behalf of Henry County in the future for limited purposes of adopting non-discretionatory Internal Revenue Service Requirement Amendments that must be adopted on a timely basis in order to maintain its status as an eligible deferred compensation plan under this code. And then it goes on further as to, you know, authorizing the chairman to sign all these documentation. So now I want to go and kind of go over some of these changes that have been developed. The first change is in Section 2.1 of the 457 Plan, and I'm gonna go through the slide presentation and go back and show you in your handouts what you've got and where it goes. This is a new section. Previously, in the old section, where you talk about elder employees, it was just a definition in the full document. Now they've actually gone out and sectioned this particular thing out as, as being a labeled section. The plans, this actually says that we're available, that the 457 Plans are available to all elected officials and employees in all employment statuses. The employer, however, may limit eligibility in this section. Just gives us more broad ability to go and make changes. If, for example, we did, we wanted to not allow a particular group to do this because they're under some other plan, you can go and do that type of stuff. The next change that's happened is under Section 3.02. The IRS is now allowing for Roth contributions to be an addition to the 457 contributions by employees. One of the things that this would require is in a payroll, in our payroll, it would have to be an additional line item on our payroll system, which we do not have the ability to do at this time. If allowable Roth IRAs are after-tax contributions, so it's not a pre-tax contribution like money out of your paycheck would be. And another issue is the Roth contributions would not be available for unforeseeable emergency distributions that are currently available, but they have to meet the IRS guidelines, and that goes through Gebcor. Henry County doesn't make those decisions. And again, Henry County currently does not permit Roth contributions. The IRS says you can, currently we don't because of our payroll system's limitations. So that's the second change. The third one is Section 3.03, which is automatic enrollment. We basically have automatic enrollment in our Defined Benefit Plan. Everybody who's a full-time employee is enrolled mandatorily. This says that you, we have the ability now to actually let everybody automatically enroll, and it can be in a specific percentage amount specified by the employer, like we do 6% for the Defined Benefit Plan. We could go and say it's a 3% mandatory automatic enrollment for the 457. And this can be elected for either existing employees, not already enrolled, or for new hires, or for both. There's also an opt-out provision for the employee. If the employee does not want to be a part of this and opts out within 30 days, he'll get his contributions back. If he opts out after 30 days, he will have a 457 account that will not be reimbursed, it will only be reimbursed at termination. Also, the employees, when it, if you did an automatic go-in, it would be into a set default program for the investments, but then the employee can go in and change the investments. It's not anything locked down, but just to get everybody enrolled when they come in, it's set, and it'll probably be set in a money market type account for them to come in and invest how they want to. This is also, this, this would be a pre-tax deferral program, and Henry County does not currently permit automatic enrollment because we have it in the Defined Benefit Plan. 3.04 is employer contributions. The employers, the employer being Henry County, when we had a 401A, 457B, the county's money always went into a 401A. Now you can actually have, the employer can contribute to the 457B on behalf of the employee. And there, the difference in that is if it goes into 401, you still have a vesting issue. If you deposit it straight into his account, they're automatically vested. Employer contributions are, are available to the participants for unforeseen emergency distributions, and Henry County does not allow employer contributions to the 457 account as of today. The next section is 7.03, Participants Direction of Investment. Currently, provisions allow for the plan participants to determine how their funds are invested within the investment options selected by the employer. We provide a platform for people to put their money into, and they can decide which one of those platforms they want to put it in. There is a new thing that the IRS is allowing, is self-directed brokerage accounts, which we currently do not have. This would allow them to go and invest in anything, not just what we have in our platform, and currently, we do not permit direct brokerage accounts. The next slide is the Summary of Administrative Changes, Administrative Services Agreement Schedules. I put this in here just because when we're talking about this Summary of Administrative Services Agreement, there's, there's attachments that go along with it for bookkeeping purposes, fee schedules, telephone communications, telephone electronic communications, the Defined Contribution Board of Trustees, investment options, investment option elections, employer participation responsibilities, designate- participation responsibilities, designated, designation of authorized individual, and unforeseen emergency approvals. Those are in that packet, and we can talk about any of those that we, we want to. The one that I definitely wanted to discuss that's probably the most, I won't say controversial, it's the one that affects the employees the most, is the fee structure that Gebcor has in place for 457B currently. Currently, all participants are not required to pay an annual participation fee, but going forward, there's a $20 annual participation fee that's split out quarterly and charged at $5 a quarter. If somebody's got their money in the 457 account, but they're no longer participating, there's an inactive participant account fee that is $50, which again is assessed quarterly on all accounts under $25,000, and on any account above $25,000, that fee does not exist. The current fee structure on all 457B balances will be adjusted based on the average daily balance during the preceding quarter. That's the, that's the, how we determine how much they pay for the actual money they've got in the plan. So if we had an employee who was, who, we have 707, roughly 770 accounts that average about $12,400 in each account. So if we went and looked at the fee structure, if you are a current employee and you're putting in money to the 457 plan, the only fee that you have other than the basis fee on your investments is that one annual participation fee. If you are an active employee but are inactive in the 457 plan, you will pay the annual participation fee and the inactive fee, and quarterly that would be $17.50 versus just $5 if you're, if you are active. The current policy is all balances are charged at 75 basis points. The new policy rates are as follows, it's a, it's a step-down calculation. The first $5,000 is, is multiplied at 140 basis points, the next $5,000 at 100 basis points, the next $15,000 at 15 basis points, and anything over $25,000, it's a zero calculation. So the current policy, if you had $50,000, you have, at 75 basis points, you would be paying $375 a year for your accounts, and you'd pay that quarterly at $93.75, as long as your value stays at that $50,000. The new policy, again, on a $50,000 value, is the first $5,000, 140, which is $75, the next $5,000 at 100 basis points, which is $50, the next $15,000 at 15 basis points is $22.50, and anything over that first $25,000, there is no additional fee. So annually, you would be paying $147.50, versus, which equals out to $36.87 versus the $90 that you were paying originally with the 75 basis points. I did another calculation just to show what the average employee would be looking at. The current calculation would be $23.35 on the 75 basis points, or $5.81 a quarter, and under the new calculations, it would total $123.60, or $30.90 a quarter. And basically, this new way of calculating is higher for people with the lower balances. But in the end, if you sit there and think about the person who's sitting there with a $50,000 account, who's now seeing a lot less cost versus the person who's sitting there with a $12,000 cost, who is seeing additional cost, it's right at a neutral, like a break-even neutral, that the dollar amounts that are paid into Gebcor will basically be the same, it's just allocated a different way. And I will say also that we are currently in a plan that's between $5,000 and $9,000, which sets these bases, the first basis at 140. When we cross the $10,000, or, sorry, the $10 million barrier, then this fee structure will be changed again to the highest basis being 100 basis points. So the more money we have in the plan, the less it costs employees to, to pay in on the, on the cost. That's kind of the, the changes. One of the things I wanted to do is show you, this is the Administrative Services Agreement between Henry County. Can you change that? This is the old one, and I want to show you the difference between the old one and the new one. This, this original one was between Henry County, Gebcor, and the ACCG for Administrative Services. The new one is between Henry County, ACCG, and the Defined Contribution Plan Program Board of Trustees. That's an additional thing that's been put in there, that's part of that resolution, where they want us to allow the Defined Contribution Board of Trustees to make changes when the IRS changes the definition of what a benefit is. Instead of us having to come back before the board, they would adopt that on behalf of Henry County, we would give them the authority to adopt that only on items that have no effect to the plan, it's just a change of terminology. And then we would, they would basically restate that for us. The other thing that we were talking about is the, this is the actual new package for the 457 plan that we have with Henry County, and this has changed. Like I told you before, the first one, the Section 2. whatever, it's now an actual section in this book. These, this book and the other book are pretty much the same. Then there's the addition of this particular section, which is basically this big thick law, I guess if you'll call it that, or rules, to give you this, which just kind of very quickly shows you what's permitted, what's not permitted, in a different format. It's the exact same thing, it's an attachment to, it tells who all is eligible for the 457 plans. So a lot of the stuff that's been asked of us to do today is just to make some, some changes based on what the IRS is, is saying that we now allow. And the last piece of information in your packet is this Defined Contribution Plan Program Master Trust Agreement. This is the laws that the Board of Trustees will basically, this tells you what they can and cannot do for Henry County on behalf of Henry County. This is set, this was created by the Gebcor's legal counsel, and, you know, created to work for any and all jurisdictions. So again, it's just something that the IRS, if they change the definition, if they do some changes that requires board approval, then that still comes back before the board. This is only simply to do administrative changes that basically don't change the plan, it's just additional paperwork. So again, we've talked about amending and restating the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan, which is the big thick book, the adoption of the Master Trust, which is this item here before us, and the Administrative Services Agreement, which just added that Board of Trustees. And the other thing that the thing says is to allow the chairman to execute all these documentations. That's it in a nutshell. If there's any questions, I'll be, kind of, it's kind of an expensive nutshell, but...
Lots of information to go into a nutshell, but you presented that very well. Thank you. Does any board member have a question or comment over any of the information? All right, Ms. County Attorney, have you had an opportunity to review this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And you would like that opportunity?
I would like the opportunity. We can get it done by the next board meeting.
Okay. If it's amenable to the board to do that, the only thing that I would ask is that we not go through the full presentation again at the next meeting?
That's, that's perfectly fine with me.
I'd rather hear it again.
You'd rather hear it again?
You'd be as proud as you say.
That's fine, I can, I can take the clip off of here and replay it for you.
Actually, yeah, if anybody wants to see that, Julie can make a copy of the presentation today and forward that to board members that want to review it again before the next meeting.
I was beginning to wonder if Michael's going to do the same thing, too, earlier.
All right.
And this was provided to us in a very short period of time, and that's why the county attorney has not had an opportunity with the thing that you mentioned before.
Well, with the lost negotiations going on, and that having to be done before the end of December, her time has been tremendously impacted. And there, there's a lot of information that flows through the county attorney's office on a regular basis, so she's been herself and one other person back there for quite some time, and so, you know, she's, she's done a phenomenal job in keeping up with items she's had to review. With that being said, if someone would like to make a motion to table it?
A motion to table it until the county attorney has had adequate time to review.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamen, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero.
Latonya, that doesn't necessarily mean for the 17th, even though I think we're trying to get it adopted by the end of the year, correct, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what we're trying.
All right. All right, no one signed up for public comment, correct? Okay, Mr. County Attorney, County Manager, anything else for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
All right. Upcoming meetings and events. Monday, December 17th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. There will not be a meeting on Tuesday, December 18th. Monday, December 24th and Tuesday, December 25th, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. There is no need for executive session, correct?
No, ma'am.
All right, and hopefully no one on the board objects to that. At this time, if there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.